I need those quotes, I mean the State Auto say.
Okay, cause I ran out of fingers.
Hello, everybody. Let's bring this meeting to order. We're going to, uh, let's call the order first. It is Wednesday, September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Uh, this is a special meeting of the County Board. Clerk, could you please call the roll? Allen.
Bates here.
Uh, Berman. Doherty.
Right here.
Davist. Ford. Gums.
Gums here.
Ichbal. Jubie.
Jubie here.
Kenyon.
Here.
Tius. Leonard.
Leonard here.
Louis.
Louis here.
Linder. Mr. Linder. Melina.
Melina present.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Linder was here.
Roth here.
Sanchez.
Slicky.
Silva. Strathman.
Strathman remote.
Sergeus.
Sergeus remote.
Tepe. Williams. Young. Give a quorum. Madam Chair, your presence also. Alright, so missing is Young, Allen, Ford, Davis, Linder, Silva and Strathman is here.
Yeah, Linder's here.
And we have Dor.
And yeah, come.
Oh, here she comes. Welcome, welcome.
Ford.
And Mr. Ford, awesome. Ford is here, very good.
Quick before we lose.
Hey, here you go, come on in. Have a seat. Okay, so, um, we have Silva and Ford present, Mr. Doherty, Ms. Melina, Mr. Sergeus and Ms. Um, Strathman. May I get your permission to allow them in remotely?
Linder also.
Mr. Linder's present also. As well, okay. Thank you, Mr. Linder. Mr. Linder. Alright, um.
Alright, we gotta get through the pledge. Um, Michelle, could you do the pledge?
For the United States of America.
Which stands one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as.
Mr. Ichbal, welcome. Alright, there are no minutes for us to approve. Um, I'm going to be asking, uh, for us to move public comment to the end of the meeting because we have a number of board members who have to leave a little earlier and I want to make sure that we maintain quorum so that we can take appropriate votes. Um, and with that, I'd like to move directly into our executive session. Um, so that we can, uh, have covered that.
Can we do the resolutions first?
Uh, no, it was asked if we go through executive session first, um, so that we can cover that and then we can, uh, efficiently go through the resolutions.
That's it Frank, there's two issues that are timely that need to go to executive session for you. So if we are gonna lose quorum, these things need to go first.
Okay, so, thank you. Um, so, um. Who would like to present?
I would move that we go into executive session.
For the reasons of? Could?
Yes.
Our lawyer tells us to talk about.
The three would be the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance and dismissal of specific employees, purchase or lease a real property for the use of the public body, pending probable and imminent litigation.
Okay, very good.
Kai's second.
Thank you. Call the roll. Allen. Bates. Berman.
Yes.
Doherty.
Yes.
Yeah, this is not here. Uh, Ford. Gums.
Gums, yes.
Tius, sorry. Where am I at? I'm way down there, but Ichbal.
Ichbal, yes.
Jubie.
Jubie, I.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Tius was a yes. Leonard.
Leonard, yes.
Louis. Linder.
Linder, yes.
Melina.
Melina, yes.
Roth.
Roth, yes.
Sanchez.
Sanchez, yes.
Silva, yes.
Strathman.
Yes.
Sergeus.
Sergeus, yes.
Tarver's not here. Tepe.
Uh, yes.
Williams. And Mr. Young, you here? No? Okay, passes. Okay, very good.
Alright, everybody online that is going to be joining us in our closed session, please accept those invites. I will let you know when we are all back together again.
Together, together. We're waiting.
This is mine, I thought I lost. Everybody, we're going to executive session. I'm going to ask our, uh, audience members to please leave. Make sure that you take all of your belongings with you and so they're safe.
Alright, you got it.
Not beat on that. That's, that's, yes, correct. There's the Madam Speaker.
There are garbage cans.
All right, you are in open session.
We are back in open session, clerk, please call the roll. Ellen? Ms. Ellen? Jay Bates? Are you present?
Uh, here.
There you go, Berman.
Berman's here.
Jordy?
Here.
Davis does not. Ford?
Present.
Gums?
Gums here.
Iqbal?
While present.
Jubey?
Jubey here.
Kenyon?
Here.
Kias? Leonard?
Leonard here.
Louis?
Louis here.
All right. Linder?
Linder here.
Melina?
Melina present.
Roth?
Roth here.
Sanchez?
Sanchez present.
Uh, Silva?
Silva is here.
Strathman?
Here.
Sergeus?
Sergeus present.
Tower is not. Tepe? Williams?
Here.
Okay, Madam Chair, you are present.
We have, um, Ms. Allen is in the room.
Ms. Allen is in the room. All right, we have a quorum.
Good. Welcome all. Um, we're going to, uh, take care of our personnel issue first, so that is item 24386 because of that timing. May I have a motion and a second to discuss and possibly pass 24, a solution 24386?
Sanchez moves.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Leonard seconds.
Thank you. Uh, is there any discussion on this item? No? With no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Ellen?
Can you come back to me, please?
Sure. Bates?
Yes.
Berman?
Berman, yes.
Jordy?
Yes.
Ford?
Ford, yes.
Gums?
Gums, yes.
Iqbal?
Iqbal, yes.
Jubey?
Jubey, I.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Kias?
Kias, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Louis?
Louis, yes.
Thank you. Linder?
Linder, yes.
Melina?
Melina, yes.
Roth? Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Silva?
Silva, yes.
Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Sergeus?
Sergeus, yes.
Thank you. Tepe?
Tepe, yes.
Williams?
Yes.
That passes.
And Ms. Allen.
Oh, Ms. Allen, I'm sorry.
Allen, yes.
Very good, thank you. All right, congratulations, Mike. Study hard. Bring it home. All right, may I now have, we're going, uh, now, once again, back in order. Uh, can I have a motion and a second, uh, to discuss and possibly pass item number 24381?
Can you remove that?
Thank you, sir. Second, please.
Leonard, seconds.
Mr. Leonard, is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Ellen?
Allen, aye.
Bates?
Bates, yes.
Berman?
Berman, yes.
Jordy?
Yes.
Ford? Gums?
Yes.
Iqbal?
Iqbal, yes.
Jubey?
Jubey, I.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Kias?
Kias, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Louis?
Louis, yes.
Thank you. Linder?
Linder, yes.
Roth? I'm sorry. Melina?
Melina, yes.
Thank you. Roth?
Roth, yes.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Silva?
Silva, yes.
Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Sergeus?
Sergeus, yes.
Tepe?
Tepe, yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Okay, I want to go to items C, D, and E, just to get those vouchers paid, and then we can go back, uh, to, um, 24382. Um, may I have a motion and a second, uh, to discuss and possibly approve item number 24383?
Bates moves.
Bates, second.
Oh, one of them. Berman and Bates?
Berman and Bates. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll. Oh, Mr. Iqbal?
Yes. Madam Chair, I will oppose this, uh, expense of, uh, $3,154, I believe it's $54. I think it's totally out of line. Uh, we have no business, uh, going and attending, uh, the meetings in Florida. Uh, we are a state, uh, entity. Uh, we don't have no business in the federal government, and the expense that have been shown are outrageous. Um, every, which where you look at it, staying in the big hotels, um, valet parking, um, beer, sushi, uh, rental cars, all these things, my district cannot afford this. None are, no, nobody reasonable in my district will approve it, and I believe it should not be allowed.
Thank you. Is there another comment? Yes, yes, ma'am. Uh, microphone, please.
There we go. Um, Allen speaking. I am hoping that we will, uh, continue to come up with a policy because we haven't really had these circumstances before, but I am truly proud that we had one of us go to a national convention and partic- participate in it, not just as, uh, representing King County, but now representing the whole country, uh, by serving, uh, on one of the committees. Um, now, maybe there will be 20 people who want to do that and succeed in that, and we'll have to change all of our policies, but right now, I just want to say, I'm, I'm proud that we had someone step up to do this. It's the first time in my experience, and so I am supportive of it, even though I've realized that we need to have a policy to try and govern how we're going to do this generally.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Silva?
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair. Um, I would absolutely agree. The fact that we need a policy is imperative because as things start to change and as we become more global and information is out there, I think it's imperative that we partake in this information and then bring it back to the, to the board. So I'd love a presentation about what was learned. I, for one, also was at a conference or actually a policy institute, um, on disaster preparedness, and I've spoken about that a lot, and I would love to share with you the information. Now, fortunately, I earned a scholarship for that, but that's not always available. The other thing that we have to look at is when our board goes to this, the person who's there isn't working, isn't, is probably taking time away from work. So there are losses, uh, and expenditures on a personal level. Um, I feel we need to take part in these institutes and policy-making training as policymakers, uh, and I really feel that it's a wealth of information, so I'm happy that we're able to participate, but I do agree, we do need some sort of policy so that we can all learn from the folks that are out there learning firsthand. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Tepe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I agree with Mr. Iqbal. I believe that this is way out of bounds. This has, um, uh, not been in effect approved by anyone. There was no discussion, uh, whatsoever. Our, our policy is broken on this. Uh, because of that, this should be, uh, this should not be paid, so I will be voting against this.
Thank you. Mr. Linder?
I think it's important that we participate in the organizations to which we pay dues, and in this case, uh, someone actually went to a meeting, an annual meeting, when he was elected to become a very active member of that organization, and, uh, you know, everything's expensive these days, and when you go to a meeting that's at a hotel, you either pay for the hotel or you stay in some, you know, lesser motel down the road and pay for transportation back and forth, and, uh, it comes up to be the same money. Meals, uh, in the city i- in a hotel district are expensive, and I, I object to Mr. Iqbal deciding what someone should have eaten. Uh, the fact that someone ate sushi rather than a hamburger, uh, none of our business. Uh, I, I'm fully in favor of paying this, and we, we've had some discussion about a policy. It's, it's really difficult to have a policy that governs a board when a board is really only controlled by the 24 members of the board and anybody else. Um, but I'm, I'm in favor of paying this bill and getting, moving on.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
So we'd approve it if it was a hamburger but not sushi? No, I'm joking. Totally joking.
Depends on the sushi. Um, all right.
If you put the sushi on a bun.
Uh, so, uh, I think we're ready to take the vote, please. Ellen?
Ellen, aye.
Bates?
Bates, yes.
Berman?
Berman, yes.
Jordy?
Jordy, yes.
Ford?
Ford, yes.
Gums?
Gums abstain.
Iqbal?
Uh, no.
Jubey?
Jubey, I.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Kias?
Kias, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Louis?
Louis, yes.
Linder?
Linder, yes.
Melina? Ms. Melina? Okay. Roth?
Roth, yes.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Silva?
Silva, yes.
Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Sergeus?
Sergeus, yes.
Uh, Tepe?
Tepe, no.
Williams?
Williams, yes.
Okay, that passes.
That passes, very good. Two nays. Um, may I have a motion and a second to discuss and possibly pass item number twenty-four, three, eight, four?
Berman moves.
Kias, second.
Thank you, Mr. Kias. Discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Ellen?
Ellen, aye.
Bates?
Bates, yes.
Berman?
Berman, yes.
Jordy?
Jordy, yes.
Ford?
Ford, yes.
Gums?
Gums, yes.
Iqbal?
Iqbal, yes.
Jubey?
Jubey, I.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Kias?
Kias, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Louis?
Louis abstain.
Stain's okay.
We're going ahead.
Linder?
Linder, yes.
Melina? Roth?
Roth, yes.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Silva?
Yes.
Strathman?
Strathman abstain.
Right. Sergeus?
Yes.
Uh, Tepe?
Tepe, no.
Williams?
Yes.
That passes. Okay, very good. May I have a motion and a second to discuss and possibly pass item number twenty-four, three, eight, five?
Leonard moves.
Mr. Leonard, second.
Allen seconds.
Uh, thank you. All right, who's second? I'm sorry.
Ellen.
Second. Ford?
Ford?
It was a tie, I think.
Okay.
Discussion. Seeing none. Uh, Mr. Linder, your hand is up?
Oh, I'm sorry, it was previously taken down.
Okay, that's fine. Just wanted to make sure.
Thanks.
Uh, clerk, please call the roll. Ellen?
Ellen, aye.
Bates?
Bates abstain.
Berman?
Berman, yes.
Jordy?
Yes.
Ford?
Ford, yes.
Gums?
Gums, yes.
Iqbal?
Iqbal, yes.
Jubey?
Jubey, I.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Louis?
Louis, yes.
Thank you. Linder?
Linder, yes.
Melina, did you come back? Roth?
Roth, yes.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Silva?
Silva, yes.
Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Sergeus?
Sergeus, yes.
Uh, Tepe?
Tepe, no.
Tepe, no. Williams?
Yes.
And that passes. One aye.
All right, before we move on, I thought I'd give you, uh, Executive Committee an idea of where we are with this now. Uh, so the budget line, uh, currently has for this particular travel budget for the board, just for your board, uh, is now seventeen dollars and sixty-four cents in the account. That does not include the recent transactions that you have passed. I have suggested that move, I, we have moved money, uh, with our, within our budget, uh, to move into this account. That has not yet been done, but I want to share with you for the next two months, um...
No more expenses.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. So, um, just be very cautious if you're looking at any other travel because the money that has been moved will be covering this cost, and then there's no other additional money. You'd have to pull it out from the general fund. Okay, thank you for that. Um, we have one item left, and it was just suggested, uh, by Mr. Frank, that would be item number twenty-four, three, eight, two, that this is simply a budget adjustment. Uh, we have not moved forward with any, uh, agreement on the purchase or allocation of this building. Uh, could we, uh, move this to the October tenth board meeting, uh, so we can have a further discussion on this because at that time, there'll be more information. Is that correct? Uh, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, is this in reference to the, um, twenty-four dash three, eight, two? Correct. That's, this is, this is just amending the budget table, so it has nothing to do with...
Uh, Mr. Frank?
My understanding is there's an anticipated amendment, uh, to the, which line item it'll fall under with, uh, Ms. Hopkinson not here, and since it's not timely, it's probably best that give her time to account for and prepare for the possible amendment that I've been told is going to be made. Okay, I, this is the first I'm hearing of it, so...
Do I, uh, do we need to take a vote? I'll move this. I will move this and ask for a second. Is there a second to?
Roth's a second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Roth.
Take a voice vote.
Voice vote?
Yes.
Favor, aye?
Yes.
Aye. To move to, so this is to move this item, resolution twenty-four, three, eight, two, to the October tenth? No, I'm moving it to handle today. Oh, that was my motion. Oh, my apologies, I misunderstood.
They'll approve it.
We...
No motion needed?
Yes, we do have to have a motion to approve.
She wants to move it today.
We, we don't have, we don't have a motion on the table to support this. All right, so we...
So you're moving it just to put it on the table?
Handle, yeah. Put it on the table today. Is that what Roth is doing as well? Just to put it on the table, okay. Just confirming.
Means to...
Is that for discussion?
Yep. All right.
Open for discussion.
Okay, we are now open for discussion.
Madam Chair, I would move that we postpone this till October. Is that one way?
October eighth.
October eighth, yeah.
No, no. This is motion to pass, and then that yields to a motion to...
Right.
Postpone the consideration in def- to a definite time.
Nine forty-five AM.
So right now, the question is, is there a second for the motion to postpone?
I move second.
Okay.
Okay, so we... We have a motion and a second to postpone. Do we go into immediate vote for this?
Don't.
Or is there?
Discussion.
Discussion, and I would ask that, as per the request by the state's attorney, that we postpone this. Is that correct?
Look, it, it can go either way, but if you're gonna base on what I know of the anticipated amendment, you need to get Ms. Hopkinson down here to tell you what needs to be amended. The reason I'm saying go to, I mean, if you want to bring her down, we can do that. It's, it's up to whatever people want, but my understanding is that so, there is an anticipated motion that will change the line item.
Timely.
And it's not timely.
Not timely. Therefore, I stand by my motion to...
Yeah, and, and when I say timely, what I mean is, we can do this in October, we can even do it in November. It won't change anything for the program.
I guess, and with all due respect, I just, you know, an anticipated amendment is not something that I'm comfortable with. I mean, we can always anticipate an amendment for every single thing we vote on, and if somebody has an anticipated amendment, then we should be hearing that right now, so. I mean, that's, that's where I'm coming from, so. Ms. Jubey, your hand was up?
Well, yeah, because I'm, I'm really not clear what... I'm really not clear what this anticipated. I, I don't really understand why we're voting on something that's not sitting here. It doesn't, I, I appreciate that, that that's the suggestion to do that, but I, I think we need to bring Ms. Hopkinson down here to find out because I don't know... Understand what we're doing.
Did somebody call Ms. Hopkinson?
We've asked for her to come down. We already have. We already have.
Couldn't, that, yes, back, we just last, I'll take this last time. Well, why not postpone it? It's not timely. We can find out in between now and the next meeting. Why discuss it for a half an hour here, what the meeting, what the amendment is, when we clearly don't even have the chairman of that committee was, was aware of this happening, so...
Agreed, agreed.
Changes, we just move it for a month, and then we find out more information and then discuss it at that time.
And actually, it's just, it's a couple of weeks. It's just two weeks. So this is, um, it's not a month.
Prevention from a...
All right, so, um, we have a motion and a second to postpone. Uh, if there's no further discussion, let's take that vote. Then postpone until...
Postpone to the eighth.
Right at nine forty-five AM.
Nine forty-five. All right, Ellen?
Ellen, aye.
Bates?
Please come back to me.
Berman?
Berman, yes.
Jordy?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes, sure, sure, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. It wasn't too, she cut out. Uh, Ford?
Ford, yes.
Gums, no.
Iqbal?
Iqbal, yes.
Jubey? No. Kenyon?
Yes.
Kias?
Kias, yes. Or yes.
Louis?
Louis, yes.
Okay. Linder?
Linder, yes.
Melina's not here. Roth?
Roth, yes.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
He will feel...
Silva?
Silva, yes.
Strathman?
Yes.
Sergeus?
Yes.
Uh, Tepe?
Tepe, yes.
Williams? That passes.
Bates, yes.
Bates, thank you.
That passes, that, that has been moved to the discussion on October eighth at our next board meeting. Um, all right. Before we go into public comment, because we're gonna lose some people, then we're going to public comment, I just want to share that spectacular poster that has just, um, was given to me on Friday, uh, that is going to be, um, cover of this magazine, uh, from IDECO, uh, Office of Tourism. This is going out nationally. Uh, that is our Fox River, although it looks a beautiful shade of blue, which I think they photoshopped it. Um...
How do you know that?
But that is our Fabian Parkway, or Fabian Forest Preserve, uh, so it is, looks spectacular. Inside this magazine is an awful lot of wonderful things about Kane County, so, uh, congratulations to the Forest Preserve and congratulations to all of you for ensuring that Kane County is recognized nationally.
Will we get a copy of that magazine?
I'm, there'll be thousands of them, and I want to get a box of them.
Okay.
This is hot off the press.
We're gonna use the rest of that one.
Absolutely, yes.
Um, did, did the fabulous Fox River program have a lot to do with this, do you think?
Believe it, it certainly brought it to their attention, absolutely. Uh, Mr. Berman was there at the celebration.
So this was a collaboration of the McHenry County, well, the entire Fox River Valley area, but McHenry County people were there, uh, Elgin, uh, Convention and Visiting Bureau, and our, uh, Aurora area Convention and Visiting Bureau were all involved in this, so...
So, yeah, well done, well done on all. Uh, so I will, we'll get that framed and hang it up, uh, in one of our rooms upstairs, um, so, for perpetuity. All right, uh, let's go to public comment now. We had two speakers who have signed up. Is Michelle Betag here? Uh, how about Brian Anderson?
Gee, late and left.
Anderson are not here. May I have a motion to...
Jurn? Jurn? Roth will make the motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Whoa!
I have a second.
Roth, okay.
Get away. How dare you?
Oh.
Okay.
I move we adjourn.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
That felt better.
Second?
Thanks.
Uh, all in favor?
I was, I was trying to, I was trying to avoid us setting a new record for time.
All in favor, aye, so, uh...